Can we do it?
Yes, we can.
Good morning. This is the Lakeville Library Board of Trustees' monthly meeting. It is Wednesday, April 23rd, 2025 at 9:00 a.m. I am Ruth Gross, Board Chair, and I will let everyone introduce themselves. Jennifer Jones, Library Director.
Nancy Lefebvre, Trustee.
Patrick Marshall, Trustee.
Okay, everyone has received the packet. First thing is the secretary's report from the last meeting. If you've read it, or when you've read it, I will entertain a motion to approve or not.
We waived the reading and approved the minutes of March 26th.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, moving right along. We have the financial report and gifts.
So, no gifts to report at this time. Same old with the water service.
Yes.
And it's going to continue to go up because we are having to irrigate the new lawn. And then, we are overspent on rubbish that will continue to go up. It was about $180 last month. I know Tracy was looking at contracts that are similar to other departments, like the police get a better deal than we do with the COA. So hopefully, we'll be able to go to a contract that's more reasonable. And then, the other thing that will be overspent that I know is the heating. We have $392.91 left, and we just got a top off for about $1,200. So I know that's going to be overspent. But again, I'm holding back on some other lines so that we should even out in the end.
Like contracted services?
Yeah, contracted services. We do have one bill coming up for the waterfall for $1,200. But I know of other ones, I don't think there's anything outstanding for other contracted services other than the Watch 24.
Renew?
It's just a quarterly service. And I think there might be, we might have already paid through June, so we might be all set with that. But I'll take a look. Electricity probably will have some leftover in it because the bills have been variable. I just set the extra $6,000 to what I thought might be enough to cover it, and it should be.
We have two months left.
And the juggling continues. Yes. Okay, any questions or comments? All right, moving on to the director's report.
Okay, so we did make a little move that you might want to check out, where the CD shelves are. I have moved all the CDs over to one side as I planned. And on the other side is the YA DVD collection. So we ended up moving that plus the audiobook collection out of the YA room. And that is now at the end of the adult audiobook collection just outside of the YA room. And I'm hoping this might actually increase circulation stats because now they'll be visible to people who may be interested in them, who necessarily didn't know they were there. And the spinning racks have gone to Dyton for a new life in their new building. Mark Prochnik picked them up yesterday.
Oh, Mark is the director of Dyton. Oh, how wonderful.
So he came by, he lives in Lakeville. He came by and picked them up and carted them off. And I hope they make it to Dyton.
Good sharing.
Yeah, so we advertised on freebies. I guess that's how we found them in the first place, so now we're passing them along.
Moving right along.
Recycle, recycle.
Yeah, it's good that it's not going to a landfill. So Storytime's will wrap up next month. Attendance has been fairly studied, about 30 children per session. Teresa's kind of playing with the idea of maybe doing back-to-back sessions, but it's going to be tricky with staffing and making sure everything's done and ready for the next crowd to come in. Music time will resume in July, and it had a good six-week run with the highest attendance numbers yet. And plans are to end the summer run with a bubble dance party, I believe on the stage. Playing with purpose, attendance on Saturdays has increased. However, the Wednesday sessions really did well. Thirty-eight kids came to the first session with their grown-ups. So, or thirty-eight kids and grown-ups came to the first session. So she's evaluating the Saturday sessions and really was encouraged by the popularity of the Wednesday one. Maybe Saturdays is the day that's good for that program. Pace offered an event with a magician, and they had a really good crowd. So I'm hoping this might get things back on track with them. We'll have to have conversations about future programs with them. And then Teresa has had a lot of teens looking for volunteer hours, and they often call saying, "I need hours by Friday." So she's going to try to work on a schedule to manage dates and tasks so that we kind of cut back on the hasty arrangements of her trying to find something for them to do.
I'm wondering if next year, I don't know whether people would see it. I put a note by the checkout saying, "Will you need hours?" Put down your name and email or something like that, and we'll let you know when it comes up. We can't promise you hours at the last minute.
Yeah, and she tells them that, but I think it's a matter of they just assume.
It's not their priority until it's the deadline.
If I call up and say, "I need hours by Friday," she'll find something. Which she has been very accommodating.
Yeah.
So she's going to work on that. Plus, I want to really work on the adult volunteer program. So we already have a volunteer policy. So I'm going to bring that as the next, I didn't put it in today's schedule. So next month, I'll bring it, a volunteer policy for looking at that and maybe an application so that we can get started with volunteering for adults. Because we've had people come in and ask about it. So I wouldn't mind starting that up again for people. And then maybe we can kind of coordinate so that, you know, there's this big notice on Facebook and everywhere that we're looking for volunteers and we need to know ahead of time. So kind of get that short notice thing.
You're going to always send them out to weed.
I wonder if we had an application and gave it to the high school, to the person who does, it's Honor Society that they need the hours. If she could just pass it out at the beginning and people could drop it off. I mean, make it clear that, you know, you have to have some skin in the game if you want to get these hours.
Right, I think that's kind of the idea for both of us is to have an application and policy ready so that we can just send it out to people and say, "This is what we're doing."
And will the town do the Cory checks for you?
Yeah, Tracy's been doing the Cory checks. She did that for the student volunteers that come in the Uponacote High School Transitional Program. So, and I'll make sure, I'll talk with her because she's going to be leaving in August. So we'll need to find out who's going to be taking that over. So I'll talk to her before we start implementing the volunteer program and see what the best way to do that is.
So what happens when, do the high school kids have to be Cory checked as well?
Yes, because they are over 18. This group.
But the ones under 18, do they have to?
The ones under 18, I don't believe have to have Cory check. And so Programming Matt York's Concert was great. We had 43 people, and he actually wrote the grant himself for the Lakeville Arts Council. So he took care of that part. Novelty's Discuss Northern Spy by Flynn Berry.
That was really a good book. I read it on the side. Very interesting book. I haven't read anything about Northern Ireland before, so.
Yeah, we were looking for an Irish author, and that one came up and had enough copies because you always have to make sure you have enough copies in the system. So they were reading Westward Giraffes for this month, and then the group is back in the gallery because of attendance. They're up to like 20 at least coming in person. And Elsie's Art Program had 17 attendees, and they did their own version of Matisse's Goldfish painting. And they didn't really get to finish. So we're considering maybe altering the time so that they get a nice chunk of two hours without having to worry about cleanup. So maybe just moving it forward a little bit. We had the Capoeira demonstration yesterday that went very well. Not a lot of people came, but it was a lot of fun from what I could hear. Peepshi is tomorrow. That's sushi with peeps, unlike the Wehrem diorama. Learn to Play the Ukulele is next week. We have Novelty's next week. Mandela Rock Art Painting is something that Christina and Teresa are working on together, and that is already full. And Genealogy Club happens again Saturday, May 17th. For Buildings and Grounds, we all saw that DPW finished the front projects and seeded the lawn. We've got the sprinklers on to get it started. There is a leaky pipe out behind the boiler room. And yesterday, our guy came to do the backflow prevention test, and he said it's the seal that's in the relief valve back there. So Paul is aware of it, and he's working on a fix. I think he was going to start with the city water department. And then I was told a plumber could fix it, so hopefully, we can get that fixed soon. Advanced Air is scheduling the semi-annual, oh, scheduled the semi-annual maintenance. And they discovered more VAV boxes that aren't functioning, so Paul had them return to fix two of the three and authorize repairs to the remaining boxes. So that is yet to be scheduled. Then we should be fine for switching over to AC. Burgess Pest did the seasonal pest management, and they should be out monthly to spray the outside. Earth and Water actually called yesterday after I worked my report and said that they will be by on Friday to take care of the waterfalls. And I also mentioned to him that the board across the top of the big one was, you know, kind of warped and rotting, and he said he could take care of that.
Oh, good.
And I said it's on both of them, so if he can do both of them.
Twenty years old.
Yeah.
Over twenty years old.
So he said, text me pictures. I texted him pictures. He said, "We'll just take care of that." And I mentioned the gap too, to see if we should be worried about the gap. So he said they'll take care of it. And then Memorial Bricks were placed with the help from Gates Masonry Construction on Thursday, April 17th. So they were ones that provided a reasonable estimate and had worked with the DPW, so they came highly recommended. We do need a little more sand on them, but hopefully, they'll send along the invoice. And we'll be good. And I haven't heard anybody mention anything yet about it other than, you know, people saying that it looks nice, so. And then we had our budget hearing with the Selective Finance Committee that went very well. We, I provided some statistics from Ayers Reports to back up our budget requests. And then if all goes as planned, we should be on track for meeting June 9th. They did meet yesterday to talk about the general budget. And the food provides proposal was approved, so I'm going to start collecting in June. I'll advertise in May and coordinate with Lori for food drop-off. And then we'll be closed Saturday, May 24th and May 26th in observance of the Memorial Day holiday weekend. Middleboro Gas and Electric called to check on the leaf blower and said if anything, you know, parts are missed, go missing, or anything happens to it, just to let them know. So I had Pammy catalog it and get it ready for use. There was a waiver of liability that I had with the box, so I will have people fill that out prior to checking it out. And then the Friends met on Monday, April 6th for their upcoming events. And Mini Golf did great. I know it was between 250 and 275. I think they said 275. People stopped by to play. We were lucky because the weather was rainy, so I think people were looking for things to do.
And they love coming here to do this, it's so much fun.
And they got a pretty good amount of donations, I think over 300. And Joe Buckley, who said he was retiring, has decided to continue the Mini Golf. He had a discussion with his wife, and his wife said, "You're going to continue with the Mini Golf," right? So he, we already booked a date for next year. It's going to be April 12th. And then Tea in the Gallery is on May 4th. There are a few tickets still available. Randy Swan had a wonderful reception with over 100 people attending. He was very pleased with the turnout. And next in the gallery is the Guild of Natural Science Illustrators Annual Jury Members Exhibit with a big reception planned for Monday, July 14th.
Excuse me.
And I included Teresa's report in the end if you wanted to read through what she had to say. Without putting her name, so.
Okay. Building and grounds, have you got that?
Yes.
Okay.
And I kind of did the budget update in the report too. Just that, you know, town meeting is June 9th. As far as I know, we're just getting put forward as was noted in the budget materials.
Do we have a theme for summer readings yet?
Level, it's Level Up at your Library.
Level Up?
Yeah, it's a gaming theme.
All right, going up to the policy list review, is that right?
Yeah, that's where we are. So the computer and internet use was the one that I presented last time. It combined the Wi-Fi with the computer and internet use.
Now I have wireless policy from the paperwork you gave us last time, is that?
That's because it was separate.
It was separate. And then the one I included in your packet is the one where I combined everything. To make it sort of a clean one policy where you're not referring back to the other one.
Do we need to approve this?
Yes.
So I would move to accept the updated computer and internet use policy.
And I would second that motion.
All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, and then the rules of conduct, we already had approved, but we have to make a small adjustment. And I don't know if it came through on your.
It's number six?
Your copy. You can look at my copy, it has the highlights. Number six, we have to change from age of 10 years to 12 years as was accepted in the unattended child policy and is written in the computer use policy too. So it's just a little housekeeping to update it.
I will move to approve the change in the rules of conduct from number six, from 10 years to 12 years.
And authorize personnel, authorized responsible caregiver and legal guardians.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I second.
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
That passes. All right. Where, anything more in the policy list?
Not right now. Like I said, I'll bring the volunteer policy to next meeting.
Okay. Old and new business, audio proposals, our favorite.
So I got the updated quotes from both East West Associates and Okers as we talked about at a meeting, I think two meetings ago. Kevin with East West Associates did have to put in some different equipment than was previously looked at because of availability. And the bottom line on his is $19,726. That includes 180 calendar days of repairs or coverage. At least they'll come out standard response times at no cost to the client for 180 days, but manufacturer's warranties will vary. And then some additional terms. And he said about permits, which I'm not sure if we would have to get permits necessarily for this project.
Permits?
Yeah.
Because of what?
Installations of things, wiring.
If it's in-kind, usually you don't need them at our buildings, I know.
I don't, I don't think we would need it. But he just mentioned it in his proposal that we would be responsible for all permitting.
Okay, if there is permitting.
If there is permitting.
How much of a change was this from the, roughly?
Roughly about the same bottom line. He was around the $19,000 before. And then Okers comes in at $26,176.27. And Jonathan came back to look at things. He mentioned getting a projector that is a little brighter for that room. So comparing what Kevin suggested, what Jonathan suggested, there's a difference in volumens, so how much it would light up.
Is it a problem?
No.
Which is the stronger one, the Okers?
Yeah, the Okers would, I think, be a little brighter.
Projector scope.
And which, this is coming out of the Savvas Fund, or?
I was thinking it would be good to use the Chase Fund.
The Chase Fund, yeah. As I said, Savvas Fund.
And then Okers does a 90-day onsite warranty workmanship. Kind of similar, three-year for the projector, one year for all other, year. Both of them seem really easy to work with, so I mean.
Does either of them have local?
So East West was 1972, right? And Okers was 2672?
26, yeah. So Okers is right in Plymouth, I believe, or they were in Plymouth. I had worked with them when I was at Plymouth, or they're in Middleboro. So they're, they're very local. Kevin, I think, is Barnstable or Born.
Barnstable, it's a post office. And had you worked with him yesterday?
So I know Kevin from work at the Spire, and he did the pavilion, is doing the pavilion.
Right now?
Yeah.
Oh, okay.
Kevin is with Okers?
East West Associates.
East West.
Well, for the most part, the proposals are very similar. Same to me, the lesser cost is.
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, we could, now, is there a new projector in the East West proposal?
He's, he's, no, he's just the same Epson 5000.
Okay, so we could always upgrade that at another time, like we're going to, but.
Yeah.
Yeah, I agree with Patrick. I mean, $6,000, $7,000 is a lot of money.
Yeah.
You'll buy a lot of water for that.
Yeah, and it's relatively the same, you know, same setup, having a rack, having the, the system. I know that Okers is part of the Mass Higher Education Consortium. Kevin is not yet. He is working on that as far as I know. He is on the COMBI state bid list, I believe, but not the higher education. And this one is through the Higher Education Consortium bidding.
It's still coming out.
Yeah.
Where will the rack go?
Chair room.
Where will the chairs go?
So the rack shouldn't be too bad on the side. You know, you have the light switch, and then the rack should go right where the easels and things are. So we may have to move that around a bit. I didn't want to put it in Lake Cam's office because.
Because.
Are those cabinets empty?
I don't think so.
There's only one cabinet.
Yeah, I don't, I think they still have stuff in there.
Yeah, and I don't know how much has been moved back too.
Right.
We haven't talked about that yet.
Yeah, we need to grab our space first.
Yeah, so it shouldn't take up a lot of room.
Okay.
Okay, well, this is going to benefit them too if and when they come back because.
I just want to make sure it wasn't in the gallery itself.
No, we don't want it in the gallery.
Okay, all right.
Okay.
So I would make a motion to approve the proposals from East West Associates for $19,720.60 in funds to come out of the Chase Fund.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay.
So I will contact Kevin and get the process started.
Do we know time frame?
We have to ask him what his availability is. I know he's coming back. I had to speak to him about getting training on the sound system that will be in the barn. So I wanted to see a time that Joanne, Teresa.
Oh, you mean the steamroller barn?
Yeah, the steamroller. The sound system that's going to be there will need training on. He said he's got to put up some things and talk to a tech about testing the equipment, and then it should be good. So I'm not sure what other installs he may have, so I'll try to get on the schedule as soon as possible. Do we want to contact the Chase family or?
I think when we're at a point where.
It's in and we know it's working.
Okay.
We never did anything public about.
Because they both could not come at the same time, both this brother and sister. So yeah, we do need to.
What I can do is ask Kevin if he can quote us with a projector that matches the $6,000 volumens rather than the 5,000 volumens. And that might make the price go up a little, but it might be a better fit for.
Well, it'd probably be good if we could have everything better once and not have to piecemeal it.
Yeah.
Since we do have the money.
Yeah.
And it would be a wonderful addition.
And then we have the old projector for the lending library.
Well, we do have one that is a portable one. That did go out quite a bit in Matipoy's, the projector and screen. People like to check that out.
Okay, anything more on the audio proposals? Okay, Savvas Fund's proposal.
So Teresa put together a proposal with some phonics equipment, her phonics kits. So, I can't find my first page. So she has a whole list of things she would like to purchase with Savvas Funds that come to a total of $992.79. So this would be stuff that we would circulate like a lending, you know, sort of library of things. But this is phonics kits that tutors could check out to use in the library or people could take home. We've been finding that there are some adults who are expressing an interest in reading, learning how to read, and then children who are struggling with reading. She thought the kits might be a good idea to add to help boost literacy.
So it's $900?
It's $900.
And we have $51,666.64 available that we can use. So I think it would be a move that we fund this project to expand materials that are going out of the building, right?
Yeah.
I would second, and certainly not in opposition to it. Just wondering as far as, does this go along with like the school curriculum too, or not?
I'm not sure if it goes along with the school curriculum. She looked at a lot of stuff on, I think it's mostly from Lakeshore Learning.
Yeah.
And looking at what people recommend. I did actually talk to the literacy teacher in Plymouth when I had an adult who was interested in learning how to read. And she recommended a lot of flashcards and things like that. So we've been trying to figure out what would be best to buy to support phonics. And some of the readers just aren't, they're great, but they're not getting into phonics, the sounds that.
Yeah.
So, yeah, she kind of looked at things that would fit and kind of looked at Amazon and Lakeshore Learning and different places.
Yeah, no, I think, like I said, I think it's great, I just. I hear phonics and I still wonder. Everyone's using it, which I think it's great to use.
Lots of different, you know, everybody's, every child has a different lo- learning style, so the more material that. Umbrellas everything that has to go is something, people are gonna fit with different things, so.
Absolutely.
Yeah, so, and it, this isn't replacing.
No.
Elementary school education, this is a support thing for.
Yeah, absolutely, and we got so many tutors in here. And I think they enjoy like checking it out and then using it in the library. They can turn it right away or take it home, kid can take it home. So yeah, and it, I know, I think I can talk to Maria, Maria from the friend, she's a reading, she knows reading. We can chat with her about it too, to make sure, you know, for.
I think, like I said, I think it's great, I just mark curiosity on my part.
It'll be interesting to see how, what the um trail is of uh people taking it out too.
So Patrick, yours was a second?
I did second, yeah.
All right, those, all those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, then this passes and. Yeah?
I'm just wondering. Wait, I'll let her know to go ahead and. Oh, you mean go ahead and order it, yeah.
So do we anticipate that this will be available by summer vacation too, because I mean.
Well, if I order it quickly enough, you know, and then we've gotta get the boxes to put things in. And that, that price might go up or down depending on how the kits are and how we parcel them out in boxes. But um hopefully, you know, working with Pammy, she might have to do some talking to sales for some. Cataloging issues and then looking at it started, yeah, I'm hoping.
Okay, so. So we, we, later than it probably be late June, if maybe the earliest because of the man hours involved. Then this is something that parents might need, you know, to use over the summertime too, to help kids.
She's been thinking about um. Doing the thousand books before kindergarten again to start that broken up, so. We're definitely gonna have a more literacy focus this year.
Okay, food for finds, we've heard of that before.
Yes, so that's all, that, I just wanted to let you know that it was approved and we'll get it started, I'll get the stuff out there.
Okay. Uh Butterfly House from the Brownie Troops?
So they came by and I let them know that it was approved, and they also said that they have a seed bomb um to go with it.
Okay.
So we discussed, you know, I mentioned the garden space out front, so if they're, if you're okay with them throwing a seed bomb in there.
Yeah, I'm gonna take out a couple of.
Bomb, light boom?
No, it's um, it's like, it's a seeds within a dry thing that is round, so that when you throw it. Disperses the, the seeds and then Mother Nature takes over.
We have to let the brownies throw them, huh?
It's like a t-shirt gun at a sporting event, but for seeds instead, we're just gonna be out there.
Don't say that, we'll have brownies out there with a t-shirt gun.
There was actually an article in the Damascus Week about it.
Yeah.
And they showed off little houses, so I'm not sure which one we'll get, but.
It should look very cute.
Great, okay, um, request to honor Dr. Bornstein.
So Doris from his staff, Doris Calucci, has been in contact with me and Teresa about um. A way to honor him, and at first she mentioned a bench, but kind of told her that had to be outside, and they were looking for something in the children's room. So we've talked about possibly having a sensory wall unit, one of those manipulative things that you can. Have the kids play with. Doris has looked at a few. She has some ideas, we've kind of talked about how, you know, we wanna make sure it's good quality, that it gets a lot of good reviews. And um she's gonna talk with, I think on Monday, she's having lunch with a few of the former staff who are coming up from various states.
This is Dr. Bornstein's staff.
Dr. Bornstein's staff, so they, they, I think she mentioned something about about a thousand dollars in the budget.
They're doing it in Middleborough as well.
Yeah, so she's, she brought a few things to us the other day. She might stop by on Monday with the staff to talk about the, the ones that they like. So we're looking at a wall underneath the window on the right side of the room, under one of the bulletin boards, um. That should be enough space to put it, um. We also are, you know, trying to figure out which manipulatives will hold attention. We wanna make sure there's something the kids are gonna play with. She also would like a plaque to the winner.
Oh, we know just where to get this.
I mentioned that to her, so.
It's, is it age geared to a certain age level?
So it's gonna be like pre-K.
Pre-K, okay.
And maybe a little older, depending on.
Interested in it too, but.
Well, I'll play with it.
Yeah.
Me too. So that we know, just so that we know we're, what the age group is, that the main focus, that would be good, because. Not that we're short on stuff, but I, I think it's another thing to stimulate.
So I let her know, you know, the process would be to kind of write a letter to the board. And um so at some point, probably next month, we'll get the letter, we can talk about it and then. Let her know that you're ready to accept the gift and.
So how, who does installation?
Um, we'll have to see, it could be me, it could be my, my call on Paul or Anthony to help out a little bit. But I do have power tools, so I could, it's just screwing it in.
Good, I think it's a great idea.
Yeah.
Okay, um, library irrigation.
So.
Fun topic.
One of our monthly topics during growing season.
I know, Ruth and I had a discussion and Ruth ended up meeting with Andrew, um town administrator. Um, kind of trying to figure out where we are with the well process and everything and. As far as I can rem- recall from the email, that it's probably gonna be. Late, late summer, fall before the well is started.
Twenty twenty-five?
I'm hoping.
Yeah, of course, we heard that in twenty fourteen too, so we'll see.
So he said that they're still in the, um, they're waiting for the scope to come back from the company that they're working with. Or.
A quote?
Scope, I think he said scope before.
Scope, yeah.
Yeah, and then that will have to go out for a bit.
And where are they going to put this well, in the backyard?
That I am not clear on.
I don't know, and he didn't know. I, I specifically asked him, because I said, you know, we're. Looking at redoing the irrigation. It makes sense that the irrigation.
Waits.
Is connected to the well, so if we go ahead with the irrigation now. Where should it come from? You know, wh- where.
Coming for tongue.
Right now. And we, um, that's something that hasn't.
It's going to be another year of large water.
Well, we probably during this growing season will not have less expensive water, so it will probably not be effective until twenty twenty-six. If they're gonna do it in the fall.
But we'll have fewer plants to die. Well, I mean, we already do, more grass, but.
It's gonna get browned.
Yeah, well.
Well, the question too, I mean, the hard question to look at is, is. If we're concerned with the budget and whatnot, especially maybe not so much for next year, but the year after is, do we irrigate the whole property?
Jim had, um, had mentioned the foreman, Jim had mentioned not bothering with the back of the property and just the front.
Right, well, we're redoing, removing a lot of growth back there, so maybe that would be the logical place to put it.
Yeah. But nobody seems to have any. Thought as to where it's going just yet.
Hmm.
Yeah.
And they're still waiting to get the whole scope, which. It's, we did, we're just kind of in a holding pattern again. And he did mention that we should probably have the irrigation system looked at. To see what work needs to be done and then also get a kind of a quote as to how much it would be to replace.
Right, well, we did have a question, we did have discussion with Frank from the DPW, the commissioner, about this. And when we were, when you were doing the bricks and when he was hanging around the other day. So um, yeah, I think somehow they need to be involved too, even though this is not their project. But they do do a lot of the other stuff for us, so.
Yeah. But so far as the sprinklers that are out there right now, they are monitoring them and. There's a lot of water going into the parking lot at the um handicap zones, but he said he can't get all. The wa- uh, all the grass without that, so.
Right, we know that.
It has been addressed and.
Sprinkler for the pride that there's no irrigation for.
Right.
That was one of the big challenges I had, and I have some experience with ground grass, so um, yeah.
The question is, if we take the season and don't do the back of the building, then are we going to have to reseed it?
Well, I think you might have to reseed it anyway.
Yeah, because they're gonna go in there with.
They're gonna come in and take some of those trees out.
Stumps, the stumps will have to go out.
And let it go.
But it would be nice that we could do everything at once, so that we don't do something and then have to redo it because of traffic or. Cutting or something like that, and we know they're not gonna be doing anymore. The DPW isn't gonna be doing any more work here until the fall.
Right.
Because they have roads to do and other things, so they got, the, that last piece behind Kathy's bench was the last thing that they're gonna do this year.
They've done such a wonderful job.
A wonderful job.
It looks really good.
Um, thank them.
Our. Oh, never mind, forgot what else.
Okay, so this is an ongoing issue. How many years, how many years have we had this issue?
So the end is in sight, I think.
How many directors have we had this issue for?
Well, should, should we, um, we should go ahead and replace sprinkler heads and stuff in the front at this point.
If they're not working, if they're just doing that little dribble thing, we need to replace them, so they'll at least.
Do their job.
Do their job.
Yeah, and I have no idea what the status is near the stage.
Well, I tried to find out about the um historic townhouse site, because when the historical commission oversaw that budget. At the end of the um fiscal year, we would always have set aside over a thousand dollars to go back to the library to offset our share. Now, I'm not sure if, it's a little cloudy about how that's actually taking care of it now, because we don't have any control over that budget, cause it's in with the. Building maintenance group, so I have a feeling that we're not getting comp. We, I have a feeling that the library is paying for the historic townhouse watering, cause it's considered one system.
Right.
In reality, it's, it was a fifty-fifty, there was fifteen heads on each s- property site.
But the library is using that lawn area more than we did when that was done.
Responsible for the other side of the driveway. That is the historical commission and the towns for the historic townhouse site and the steamroller barn and now the pavilion, which was center stage. Moved because of the water main and fratton that was there, so anyways, um, I think that we need to. Look at that, because that is a, um, is at least half of the difference in the irrigation is over there.
Yeah, I mean, we still have a half.
Should not be, we shouldn't, the library should not have the historical commission or the town property as part of their budget line.
Yeah.
Unless we're gonna get compensated for it, because it looks like we are over budget for us, and in reality. Half of that is the water for over there.
Yeah.
Now, I'm talking for, as a trustee, but I'm also talking as a historical commission appointee, so I mean, I think it's only fair that we. We not share the whole burden.
So when the well goes in. That's gonna still be on the same system, but it won't, it's just gonna be electricity at that point.
Right. And they should be pay, we, the, they should pay for half of whatever it is it costs.
Okay, we'll have to try to figure out when the electricity goes up.
The only way to know what actually is happening is um. Would, to see if they have in, within their budget a payment of, for water. If they don't have one for this bill, this site, that site, then they should have one.
Yeah, I don't know what they're doing with the budget for that, I haven't looked at the.
What goes under building maintenance, I think, right now, you know, there.
Yeah.
Under Paul's budget, but.
And I know they're gonna start using his as a like revolving capital or something like that.
Yeah?
Yeah, they're gonna give him some, like fifty thousand. Yeah.
Okay. Okay, um, twentieth anniversary.
We're meeting on May seventh.
Yes.
Okay.
I did have one more thing when we get to.
Yep, anything else?
Um, so in your, the back of your packet is the resignation from Carol Magna, it's an email, yeah. She sent it to me yesterday, so I didn't, hadn't included it on the agenda. But she did send that she wants to um finish out her time here, June twenty-six, twenty twenty-five. So I know she retired previously from full-time, now she is retiring from part-time.
And this gives her how long? I know she wanted to be the long, have the longevity.
It's more than Diane now.
Yes, that was her, her point, she wanted to have.
She stayed for a whole year and she didn't have to, to beat Diane, I think. So.
Well.
And she told me she didn't want any big thing, because she will, you know, she'll get emotional, so she doesn't want to have a big. Party, so I did say maybe we could do like a cake and coffee, um.
We could also do like.
After she retires.
Stop by and say goodbye.
Yeah. So.
I don't know, she might get emotional with that.
However, she did say she will come back and volunteer, so that's a good reason to get the volunteer program started.
And maybe she'll be, become a member of the friends.
Yeah, hopefully, yeah. And she said she would volunteer to help decorate, you know, we need the decorating help.
Okay, the, we don't need to officially accept her resignation, do we?
Yes, we do.
Do we?
I move that we accept it with regret. And appreciation.
Uh, second.
Those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. She's out of here.
Well, not yet, not till after.
There, there's a lack of emotion for you.
Okay, now we come to the reorganization of the board officers. Um, unless you have anything else in older new business.
No, no more business.
Okay. I will uh accept. Um, motions to reorganize and a list, any suggestions?
You, Patrick, I should be chair.
Patrick for chair.
I will become secretary and you will become treasurer.
Okay. I like that job.
It's always easy after being the chair.
Okay, so.
And I will start ma- taking minutes officially once we voted in May.
Okay, is that a motion? All right, the motion is on. The floor to accept Patrick as chair, Nancy as secretary, and Ruth as treasurer. Do I hear a second?
Oh, I'll second.
I hope he doesn't wanna give up being secretary, I know.
Well, I'm finally getting the rhythm going now, it's been taken all year.
Well, maybe he could, you know, fill in some too, while he's, while he's chair as well, okay. We have a motion and a second, all of those in favor?
Aye.
All right. Then uh.
You have a motion to adjourn.
Um, next meeting.
To uh pick our next meeting.
So May twenty-eighth.
The fourth.
Fourth, wow, that's a late.
Is nine o'clock good?
March me.
Nine AM?
Okay.
Work very good.
All right.
Okay, great. I move adjourn.
Second.
All those in favor?
Nine forty-nine.
Nine forty-nine. All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, we're out of here.